All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Plainville Town Council and Board of Education's special meeting. Tonight is September 26, 2023. We're at the Plainville Public Library Chase Auditorium, and I am going to call the meeting to order. The second item of business is a presentation of updated cost estimate for Option One, MSP Renovate Like New Plan. I'm going to turn this over to our town manager, Mike Paulus. Mike?
Thank you, Kathy. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming to both the members of the council and the Board of Ed. This meeting tonight obviously is an opportunity to try to come together and really kind of forge a path forward once we have an understanding of the information and try to update you with numbers and try to clarify any remaining questions you may have. And we may even find that there may be a question or two or information that we have not gathered yet that we still need to provide in an effort to give the members a level of comfort in terms of where do we go from here. So it's really a lot of information to synthesize, a lot of information to absorb in one night, and not that we're expecting any decisions this evening, but it's an attempt to update everyone with what we believe is, at this point, just two viable options in terms of Option One as a renovate, as new, and Option Two, what we're calling a maintenance plan, for lack of a better title. And so with that, I'd like to thank Kevin Case for being here as well and offer him an opportunity to speak on this subject, and then we'll, from there, Kevin can introduce our consultants who will handle the presentation update on the cost estimates for Option One. Kevin?
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. It's great to see you all this evening. I'm Kevin Case. I'm the interim superintendent here for the Plainville Community Schools. And as a follow-up to our meeting this summer where we received the latest demographic enrollment information, since then, we've been working diligently to present or to gather the most up-to-date cost estimates for both Option One, the Renovate Like New proposed project for the middle school of Plainville, as well as updated cost figures for the maintenance plan. So we look forward to sharing that information with you tonight, again, as Mr. Paulus said, so that all of you can make the decisions that are in the best interest of the community moving forward. I do want to, before we introduce our first presenter, I do want to acknowledge and welcome Mr. Brian Reese, who will become the Plainville Community Schools Superintendent of Schools beginning on October 16. As you can see, we're working now to make sure that it's a very, very smooth transition. And Brian, we welcome you here tonight.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, everyone.
Welcome.
I'd now like to turn it over to our business official, Mr. Sam Elderstein, who will introduce our presenter this evening.
So good evening. Our first presenter is Mark Barili, and by way of introduction, I have to bring it back to, I think, the fall of 2021 when we began this process, when we began interviewing owners' project managers who would bring us through the process and be professionals who could put together cost estimates and educational specifications and everything we would need to do a project like we were planning. And so we interviewed owners' project managers, and CSG was the winning team we selected, CSG, and Mark has been our project manager since, who's been guiding us through the process. And so we had a cost estimate in spring of 2022, and the last thing that's been done is that cost estimate for the middle school renovation has been updated to current as of September of 2023, and Mark is going to talk about that now.
Sure.
Is this a clicker, Andy?
Perfect. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Sam, for the introduction. So we were asked to put a quick comparative cost estimate together. So as part of our services as owner's project manager, we had reserved a services PAC, which is a third-party cost estimator. So they work independently of us and the school, and their job and all they do all day long are put these cost estimates together based on the conceptual design that was put together by Antonasi Architects, which is really just a two-page plan along with an entire study of the school. And so there were square foot numbers that were put together at that price. And back in 2022, we came up with a construction hard cost number of $58,723,005.17. So that's this line right here. So if the school were to, or the town were to approve a budget back then, it would have been that $58 million number. We broke down some of the items that were inside of that. Remember, the state of Connecticut reimburses each town a certain percentage. Here in Plainville, back in 2022, that reimbursement rate was actually 65.71. Since then, your reimbursement rate has dropped a little bit, 65.36, but comparatively to some of the surrounding towns, it's a pretty healthy reimbursement from the state. So if you were to look at the original numbers, that construction hard cost number came in at $49 million. I'm going to use round numbers for discussion purposes. That $49 million is the actual bricks and mortar that it takes to build the building. So there are some design contingencies and other things like that, but at the end of the day, that's the hard cost number to pay for all the bricks and mortar to build the building. We put a conservative 19% in what we're calling your owner's soft costs on top of that. That number includes all of the things like the cost to actually pay your architect, right? So if you were to move forward, remember, you've got a conceptual design right now. You need a full set of, you know, 1,000 sheets of paper and big books volumes of specifications that identify all the things the town would be selecting for materials, what type of windows, what type of floors. So the actual cost to pay the architect is included in that 19%, along with their structural engineer, their mechanical engineers, and all their teams that come together to build the, to make the design of the school. On top of that, you've got other soft costs like FFNE, so furniture fixtures and equipment, right? There's usually a percentage reserved for all the new furniture that you would be bringing in. If the town elected to use some of the existing furniture, that number could be reduced, but you'd really have to take a hard look at what's there versus what you'd want to do. But typically, in these types of schools, you know, we include FFNE, remember? That reimbursement, you still get that 65% on that percentage. So along with technology, so any of the technology, new projectors, new screens on the wall, new whiteboards, whatever it is that's included, security, all those things kind of fall under technology and included in that 19%. It's a renovation, so you don't know what you get into until you start pulling things apart. But, you know, there's also environmental studies that have to happen, and if there's any hazardous materials that need to be removed, we identify a percentage of that cost for those environmental studies, along with, you need a professional monitoring company and things like that to make sure that that abatement is done correctly. On top of that, you've got materials testing, independent testing labs who do all the testing during the project. So if you're going to be excavating anywhere in a renovation, there's less materials testing than, say, in new construction. But all of those kinds of costs are included. And then also included in that 19% is your owner's contingency. You always want to carry a contingency value in the job for change orders, things that are unknown, things that the school might want to change. There are always costs that are going to creep up during construction, especially in a renovate is new, because, again, you don't know what you're getting into, you're going to get conflicts with mechanicals, things like that. So all of that we carry in at this stage in the game where you really only have a conceptual drawing to work off of, you haven't got a designer to really get into the, into the design. We carry that kind of a contingency, and that's pretty normal. I would say anywhere from 17% to 20% is what we would carry on any given job. So that gets you to your total estimated project cost. So bricks and mortar, and then all the other stuff that comes along with it, right? Your owner's project manager costs, all your professional fees are included in there. Then we take away your percentage. So 65% in 2022, if that 65.71 was $38.5 billion, you'd be getting back from the state, not right away, not upfront, right? But as through the, through the construction project, you get reimbursement from the state. There, we did do, however, a reimbursement adjustment over the space standards. And what that means is, and you heard Kevin talk about the enrollment projections and what that means, well, the state takes a look at that enrollment projection and says, "This is how large of a school we would approve based on your eight-year enrollment projection, so what it looks like over the next eight years," and what that number should be in terms of how big we'll allow or reimburse you for your state. If you want to build a bigger school, how about it? So Plainville wanted to build a bigger school, they'd allow that, but they wouldn't reimburse you for that extra space. So the current school is bigger than the space standards allowed for the amount of enrollment. And so there were a couple of things that we tried to accomplish prior to coming to town council with the numbers, was that we tried to get what's called a space waiver. And you go back to the state and you ask them for a waiver to say, "Listen, we've got an existing school, it's a little bit larger than what might be in a typical middle school today, you've got, I think, an auxiliary gym, if I remember correctly, an auditorium, some things that today's standards wouldn't get approved in a middle school project. But you have them, and it seems hard to accept that we're going to just lap off sections of the building for the sake of a space standard when we've got a perfectly good space that the kids could utilize and the school programs could take advantage of." So we went back, and because of some of the changes within the grant program, there's less flexibility than there used to be in terms of negotiating directly with the state. So they said, and you also have the Oak Hill School that's renting space in that, in that building, and you also have district-wide storage in the basement of that school. So they said, "Listen, we understand, and we'll waive the areas that you have for Oak Hill, and we'll waive the district storage. We won't include those, we'll allow you to not include those in your overall estimate, but you're still over by about 5%, 5.5% of the space standards." So the school, even with those numbers, or those spaces being approved, still a little bit bigger than the state would typically reimburse you for. So they said, "We recommend that you go out for special legislation," and that is a process that the town can do to work with legislators to try to get that space waiver approved. And you can start that process now, and if you've got that approved through legislation, that adjustment, that 5%, sorry, 5.25% adjustment would come back to you and a state reimbursement. And we've seen on other projects legislators do a great job of getting things passed through special legislation. But if you didn't, and we were to move forward just as we are today, you would get a reduction in your overall reimbursement, and you'd be at about 60% as opposed to 65%. There's also another reimbursement that we do, which is called ineligible. We factored in about 2.5% of ineligible costs. Those ineligible costs are things that the state typically wouldn't reimburse you for. Every project has them, more so on a renovation maybe than a new construction. But those ineligible costs, because you have work that still has to happen in those spaces or those space standards, you still need to put windows, if you're going to replace all the windows, you're not going to replace all the windows only in the 95% or what's eligible, you're going to replace all the windows in the building. So you might be replacing windows in those spaces that the state is deeming ineligible, and you're going to touch the siding, and you're going to touch the roof over those spaces. And so they're literally going to divide, how do you get mechanicals in, are going to ask us that anything that impacts those, we would consider ineligible costs, because you're improving those spaces. Like the district storage, you're going to improve that space, you're going to improve the, maybe the ducts work that flows into the Oak Hill space, or the windows that are in the Oak Hill space that they consider not part of the school program. So they're not going to reimburse you for those particular pieces. And so what we do is we just put a factor in there and a reimbursement adjustment. And at the end of the day, you came up, we came up with a total cost in Plainville of about $24.4 million. So we did a updated cost again in 2023. The actual hard cost of bricks and mortar cost increased by about 5.5%. Some of the biggest factors in that were temporary facilities, so the cost of portables or the cost of, right? If we're doing a renovation, we can't work in the space the kids are learning in, so you've got to put them somewhere. So we've looked at cost, and one of the strategies that Plainville looked at was taking the district-wide storage, moving it somewhere else, creating four classrooms within that district-wide storage. So there's cost of lumber, cost of drywall, cost of all those things to upgrade and improve that space to create classrooms there. And I think we talked about two potential portables outside, or temporary classroom areas outside of that as part of the cost. So that percentage increase, one thing that went down was the cost of MEPs and HVAC costs. We were all very, very conservative last year, and some of the escalation costs were just impossible to track because they were changing week after week. And so industry standards were kind of pushing those MEP cost numbers up. We've seen those come down somewhat, and so we actually did a little bit better on the MEP costs that were associated with that. Some of the other things, we were probably a little bit low on our commercial kitchen equipment, that number bumped up a little bit. But at the end of the day, it was about a 5.5% increase, so about $2.6 million in hard cost construction if we had started last year versus looking at starting in 2024. We kept the same conservative on soft cost percentages. It really worked out to be about a half a million dollar difference there, and so about a $3.1 million difference overall. If you looked at the, say reimbursement rate went down, so you lost a little bit on your reimbursement rate, but you gained a couple million dollars on the actual reimbursement. Higher construction costs means up, you're going to get more money back from, back from the state. So that delta was about $1.8 million. Some of the reimbursements for the, over the space standards, just about $150,000, and the ineligible is about $375,000, we'll call it, for a grand total difference of about $1.8 million from 2022 to 2023. And so that's, that's it on the comparison from 2022 to 2023. I hope I was clear in how we got to those numbers. Sam, I don't know how you want to move forward.
Thank you, Mark. I think maybe through the chair, through Kathy, we envisioned this as section by section before going to the end, while this information is fresh in your mind, that you may want to, you know, just recognize it, members that want to clarify or ask questions in this section.
So, okay, I think that's a good way to do it, because all the information is fresh. So I'm going to start with the council. Does anybody have any questions for Mark regarding some of the numbers that he's presented?
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
A question. First, I just need to acknowledge it's my 25th wedding anniversary, my wife. This is our date tonight. So that's, that's our date tonight is the council board of ed meeting. Now, but you talked about getting a legislative waiver. Of that 5.25%, is that, I don't want to say negotiated, but is that legislated, how much of that we could get back through legislative action?
So that 5.25% is the percentage over to the space standards, and so that number, that's where we got that percentage from, so if you...
But you know, you understand what I'm saying, like, would that be up to the legislator to kind of negotiate, you know, figure out through the legislation how much of that we could, in theory?
You could get that, absolutely, yes. So is it a hard and fast number? I don't think so. So there's argument, you know, if the town is able to make a case for another percentage of that, use of that space, right? Or a better argument than we came up, we did come up with what we thought was a pretty good letter to the state and an argument of what the town would be using those for, right? Plainville's got a really rich STEM program and, you know, towards careers. There was a lot of things that we identified that why Plainville Middle School might be different than, than other towns in terms of using that, using that space. So we also talked about corridors, which you have wide corridors, one side of that corridor doesn't access a lot of rooms, so there's a, it's the way that, but it doesn't make sense to re...
Well, I would imagine, like, you're literally wanting to knock down existing walls to make things smaller.
Correct.
Like, that makes no sense. I mean, I'm not a construction person, but that to me...
Right.
I mean, I understand our point, and I guess maybe...
We think you have a really good argument, and we've seen lots of things passed through legislation. But now, especially now, like, anything that's, you know, hasn't been, you know, isn't, is a statute, they're, they're not...
Okay.
Oh, it's CGI, you know, the Office of School Construction, I think it's old GR now. They, they are not going to move from that, from that parameter in any way, and their recommendation is go for special legislation.
And as a follow-up, and this might be more for the administration side, have we engaged our legislators at all to say, you know, just a heads up or just to say, you know, we potentially could have this action that we're looking for you to work on? I know technically the, you know, the session isn't necessarily going on right now, but...
No, but for, on my behalf, no. The answer is, the short answer is no. I have not reached out, I have not done that, and, but certainly it is an important piece, and, but no, I don't...
Because we've had success. I believe our state representative, Betty Bolkis, a couple state reps ago, she did for one of our projects, I believe she was able to pass special legislation that allowed us a space waiver. So it is doable, something that we've seen in Plainville happen, so, okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The 65% reimbursement rate, if I remember correctly, our maximum reimbursement rate was hinged on a few different things, one of them being something like choice students. Does that maximum reimbursement include all of those conditions being filled?
It does not. So choice comes after. So you can't go in with the expectation that choice is going to be approved. So it sounds like you have a large number of choice students, and so the expectation is that you would apply for that afterwards and that you would get an additional, and I can't remember what it was.
Roughly 5%.
Yeah, so it was, it was a good number.
Yeah, I think it's percentage percentage for the citizen district, and so it's roughly 5%, which would bring us, when we were presenting this earlier, would bring us from the 60% back to the 65%.
Right, without the space waiver. But again, that's after, they don't allow you to include it, but I will say in another town, one of the letters that we got back from the state when they passed the, the project, and it was, the state came back and said, "Well, we can't do this, but don't, you know, we will be approving your choice waiver, I mean, the choice program." So, so there is opportunity there for sure to gain some of that back.
And you also mentioned our reimbursement rate dropped slightly from last year. Do we have any idea which way that rate's going to keep trending going forward?
I don't. It went up a few, two years ago, so you had prepped up a little bit, it dropped down. I don't, I don't know how the numbers all get decided every year, but it's hard to say where you, where you would trend with that. But I could, I could certainly look into that and see if there's an answer I can get to.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you.
Any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I was a little unclear about whether this owner's soft cost, the 19%, also included the contingency, or is that listed in another?
It does, yeah.
Does it include it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
I have a question for you, Mark.
Yes.
Regarding the $61.9 million, are you confident that is going to be enough to do this? And the reason I ask this is that in the not-too-recent past, there have been towns that have gone through a referendum process, approved dollars for major, you know, major improvements to their schools, and as the project went forward, there wasn't enough money to complete it, and a subsequent referendum had to occur. Two towns that come to mind are Farmington and Cromwell. And I understand when those numbers were gathered up, things were in great flux out there in the world that you folks deal in, but I want to know from you, are you confident that this number is going to carry us through the entire project, or are we going to be looking at something other than that?
So I can tell you the process that we would follow. If you were to carry that number through referendum, it proves, you put your application in, and that's moving forward. What happens is you then put out an RFP, you hire an architect, for an architect in design, and then you would hire a construction manager for pre-construction services. And what we did with other towns, and what we would do with Plainville, is lead that process where the architect would get to a certain point of design, and then we would have that construction manager provide you with a real-time estimate at 40% design development drawings, and we would provide a third-party cost estimate, or I should say, your owner's rep would provide a third-party cost estimate, and they would reconcile those two estimates, and we would say, "Okay, we're here now, 40%. We think that we've got to make some value engineering decisions now because our numbers are here, or we're looking really good and we're going to keep moving." So I've had some towns where it's worked out well, some towns where, depending on what you're pouring into that design and what you're selecting for design and what the town's selecting as, as material choices, might be opportunities where you have to create these value engineering items. And you get to 90%, and then when you get to 100%, you actually put it out on the street. And that's when you know at that time what the market is impacting. So Farmington, for example, we did that cost estimate three times, we felt pretty good going into bid, and we were off by a few percent. But that few percent of $135 million is, was about $5 million, right? So they had to start value engineering another $5 million out of it. It was, it was a tough time for them, and they made the decision to go back out to referendum for, for more dollars. We had another project where our numbers actually came in spot on. And another project where same cost estimator had worked through, with the town, through each phase, and the town decided that they didn't want to value engineer, and our cost estimator's number was within $100,000 if we're low bid came in.
Good evening. The time is now about 3:30, and the library will be closing in 30 minutes. Please be aware of the time and start to wrap up whatever you may be working on and or searching for. Thank you.
So we have a lot of, a lot of confidence in our third-party estimators that work with us. They, they, they give you today's market rate and what's happening. So things change in the economical environment, it's hard to say that, you know, when we actually go out to bid a year and a half from now, that what those numbers are going to come in, but we, we feel pretty confident, and then you've got a good checks and balances along the way to keep you educated as to where you are. It's just decisions that the town would need to make as we got through the process. One of the things that hurt Farmington and I think Cromwell was the timing of some of these things. When the cost estimate was done in 2020, 2019, right? There had been a lot of time that had passed, the project was paused for many, many, many months, and then came back, but that's the cost estimate that we were going out to. Had it bid that time, had it not paused and bid, they may have done better. We found projects that were, because contractors were unsure, COVID was fairly new, they didn't understand what was happening, they wanted to lock in jobs, so they were coming in low. What happened after that is as they were getting, they were, you know, contractors were trying to make up some of the things, the margins that they left. It was difficult to get materials, there was a lot of uncertainty, so they were really padding numbers in a way that just, because they didn't know what else to do. And so the market was showing higher numbers in our, in materials and availability, things like electrical switch gears, still takes a long time to get, a year and a half in some cases. So as soon as jobs are getting awarded, the first thing they're doing is buying the electrician, electrical package, so they can get the switch gear ordered, so that a year and a half from now, you can get that switch gear, plug it in, and you can actually charge your building, right? So there were some of those things. We're, we're seeing much more availability, a little greater comfort level, of course, you know, with an election, you're like, you never know how, what things are going to affect in pricing. Five years ago... Five years ago, ten years ago, escalation was easy to just three and a half percent each year, whatever it was that escalated, and you can pretty much count on that escalation cost from the time of putting numbers together. So, this number, again, is all based on industry, where we are today, what we're, what we're getting feedback from, and it's on a conceptual drawing. So, we have two pieces of paper, and I, some really good dialogue, and so the number, the estimates will fluctuate as we move forward, and the decisions that Plainville makes in the design process will help to determine how that price is going to go. So, if you wanted core tile and entire school, and you wanted, you know, or if you went with vinyl or linoleum, right, those, those choices make a big difference in how those prices come back, and, and, you know, your professional team would guide you through that process in terms of, you know, what's best, and you might go out there and put numbers out, and then have some value engineering numbers to say, if the numbers come in and we can't afford what we want, we're going to make these decisions to get what's our next best choice. So, I know it's a very long-winded answer to your question, but I hope, I hope it helps.
I mean, that's why we ask those questions, is to get information, because you're here to do that, and I appreciate that.
Sure.
And again, that is a very, a great concern for me.
Understood.
This has happened to a number of towns in Connecticut, and not only did that happen, the towns had to go back to the legislature and ask them for a reimbursement change, and so if we start getting into those weeds, you know, it can be very cumbersome and difficult choices are going to have to be made somewhere along the way, so I appreciate that, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anyone on the board wish to ask a question tomorrow?
I have one quick question. Mark, how confident are you with these figures of before you were advisor changing them, depending on the time that we put this, or this concept out to, out to referendum?
Sure, so these numbers were based on a twenty-twenty-four grant application submission, right? So, we incorporated escalation costs to work on that timeline. So, if you were to go to referendum, go to application, that gets, you know, the idea is that the project would make the priority list for twenty-twenty-four, you'd get a letter sometime in, at the end of the year, putting you on that priority list in December, and then it's, you know, you get your grant application approval some months later, but the idea is, is that you're working through the design as you're waiting for those sort of things to, to happen, so you're not delaying in any, in any respect as you're waiting for that approval, but once you're, once you're in and your application's in, we can get a good sense of making the priority list.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else?
Hi.
Hi, it's Angela Park.
Yes, yes.
I, I was looking at the owner's soft cost of nineteen percent, and just the, the difference between the twenty-two and twenty-three, it's only, I know it's only, but five hundred thousand dollars, it-
Yeah.
It seemed a little, like, on the shy side for estimates for all the different things that it covers, that there's a great deal of-
Yeah, so-
Potential for increase in cost of those items.
We're from nine point three to nine point eight million.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're carrying just under ten million dollars in soft cost, and so the difference is, you know, the nineteen percent on two point six million, that, that's really the difference, or difference.
I was suggesting the percentage, the increase just seemed a little low.
Seemed low, yeah.
So, all the different things that have potential for, you know, that bucket.
Did I do my, did I do my math wrong?
You did, right.
Oh, yeah.
It's ninety percent.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else wish to ask a question?
I have a quick question. With regards to the renovate like new, are we guaranteed that we're going to, the application that we're going to submit for reimbursement will be approved, and how confident are we? Is it ninety percent of schools apply, are, are approved, or what's the percentage rate of approval once the package is sent to the state or any person?
We really haven't seen a whole lot of schools not be approved in their app, so unless there's something really wrong with our application, the process, the project itself, I feel pretty confident that this, you know, that as long as the funds are, are at, are in the state, that they would, they would elect to move this, to move this forward, so. I don't think Plainville's had any issues in the past with the schools that have been submitted, so, right now, they have a, you know, the state, the state has a, has had a pretty healthy budget for, for school programs, and they've always supported that process, and so, I would say unless there's something really wrong, or your school isn't at a, a age, remember, the town waited for this process knowing that the likelihood that they wouldn't pass was because you hadn't met your twenty-year market at that point, right? So, the school qualifies, it hasn't, we, we've put together a comprehensive package to show the state that a renovate is new project is warranted, so we've done the studies, we've, I checked all their boxes, that was part of what the town had paid to do in the beginning, so we had to put together a comparison of new construction versus renovate as new, and we were able to show that a renovate is new, is warranted, I think the study with new construction was for that particular, on that particular site, and, which was a higher, higher cost, less reimbursement rate, so we think that, that the state would absolutely approve this project, given the, given the documentation that we would be providing with the grant, with the grant application.
And just to clarify, we wouldn't be committed to starting the project or starting construction before we knew whether or not we were approved of the state, correct?
That is correct, so the town might, might obligate or set aside some funds to get the design process moving, because the law, if you wait for that whole process to happen, and then you get an architect, and then you start the design, the design's, you know, a good eight-month, nine-month process, right? So, for, for a project like this, so that, you know, if you wait, that, you're going to wait that much longer, and your costs, you can see the cost escalation in one year, you know, we, we would, we would encourage the town to consider starting that process and engaging an architect, and getting that process rolling while the, the state funds are, but you can absolutely stop that process if the state decides not to approve the project.
That would be like the money we spent last year preparing to go to referendum, right?
It would be, be a little larger amount, because they would be well into construction design documents at that point, so, but you, you can negotiate that with whatever architect you selected.
I just had a question on the five point five-two percent over space requirements.
Yes.
Now, you're saying that we can send that out for a legislative waiver, would it, would if it doesn't happen, what if we can't get that? You know, where, where do we go from there?
So, if you don't get the waiver, you could go, you could go back and get it next year and still see if you could get it retroactive, but what happened is, you would, you would be at that sixty percent reimbursement rate as opposed to the sixty-five, so, so this, this number would be, this number is without the space waiver.
Okay.
If you were able to get the space waiver, you would take this money and put it up here in your reimbursement rate, and your town, your net municipal costs would be, would be less by that much.
Yeah.
Would be that much less, you would have to bond the project cost or the project cost, but, you know, what the town would be focusing on is how much, how much it would need to bond for the project. So, you're, you're very, you're very welcome. I, so, did you say your, one thing we could do is, if your, if your enrollment projections are better than they were when we did this process last year, we could take a look at that and see if you actually qualify for a little bit more square footage, I'm not, I'm not sure if that's the case, but you might get, you might get a little bit back in our, in our numbers. Project cost or the project cost, it's just a matter of which bucket. You know, our job is to help you decrease your net municipal exposure, and so, if we, if we could do that, and we could show that your enrollment projections are higher than initially identified, that might be something-
Highest year in the next seven years?
Highest year in the next seven years, I think, one of the challenges, I think, with Plainville was that this year, or last year, was the highest number, and so you've scratched that year off as you're moving into your next, so when we were looking at it, we weren't sure where your enrollment projections were going to go, so.
One last question, Mark, before we move on to the next section.
Sure.
So, start to finish, if, let's say, a referendum is approved, what is the timeline from when it actually begins until when the, the building is finished? I know there can be bumps in the road and so forth and so on, but generally speaking, what could we expect in terms of the timeline?
Sure, so that's a great question that we would need input from our contractors, but I would think that if you went to referendum and application deadline, June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four, right, and you start your design process from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five, you could be going out to bid sometime in probably the fall twenty-twenty-five, you want to try to get out to bid as early as possible, because if awarded, you want to be able to provide a, a limited notice to proceed, get your six or seven critical trades under contract to at least start ordering some things and getting moving, and then we get you out of the ground before the snow flies. That would impact whether you start construction, you know, fall of twenty-twenty-five, or you started in the spring of twenty-twenty-six. You know, a renovate is new project would depend on how many moves you would need to make with the students, how many times you would have to coordinate a section, so if we could take larger chunks, they could, they could, they could move faster, and I, and I apologize, I can't remember the timeline we put together, but I want to say maybe eighteen to twenty months, something like that, I think is what we had talked about, from start to finish with constructions, so you've got a year of design and probably eighteen to twenty months of construction, because you're, you're going to finish the section, you're going to move those kids in, so there's a move that has to happen each time you do this, and it has to be coordinated, but we could help hone in on, on some of that, but I apologize, I can't, I can't recall exactly the schedule that we had, had put together.
I'm thinking, Matt.
But I, I would say that's pretty close.
Okay, yes.
As a, as a piggyback to that question, I, I know there were some issues because COVID, in terms of towns being reimbursed entirely factored.
Mm-hmm.
Has that changed, and do we anticipate that to be different in terms of getting reimbursement in more effectively?
So, it's a great question, and usually it's your last reimbursement that waits the longest. The, you know, there is a, I think they've met from eleven percent down to five percent that they hold back, so there's a holdback at the end, until all your documentation and your audits are completed and everything is finalized and sent in. Other than that, you put together a cash flow projection from start to finish, and then you put in that timeline what your reimbursements would be at the, the timing, so when, you know, we would, we, your owner's rep could assist in, or the town can do it, but you go into the Core CT program, you put in and say, we, we spent X amount of dollars to date, and this is what we're asking you to reimburse for, they pay you that, and then you can put your next reimbursement in, and so we try to build that into the timeline. We have found that with the state, they're changed their process, and so some schools have seen a delay in their reimbursement, because now they're saying, okay, well, that's great that this is how much you spent, but we need proof of payment that the town has made these-
Well, and that's my thought, that's around the hook until we get that reimbursement.
It always changes with, with the state, unfortunately, so, what was typically sixty days, and some of the projects, like Farmington, received their first one in sixty days after we'd submitted, it was, you know, it was pretty quick, but then they changed their process on us, they asked us to do a few different things, and so that second payment got delayed, you know, you hope now that we're, we're where the state, we're going to provide them everything they want, those reimbursements will get back to sixty days, but they are checking every box, and so it's, it's really about our due diligence and making sure that everything is incorporated, and that our paperwork is, that they, we leave no questions for them is the best way to get faster reimbursement, but to your whole point, you are on the hook, right? Those dollars still have, the, the project still needs to be moving, and money needs to keep flowing, and so you are correct that those dollars need to be, continue to be paid out while you're waiting for each one of your reimbursements, but if, if, if your team stays on top of getting reimbursements and getting the paperwork in, you know, there should be a, a good consistency after that first draw.
Great.
Mark, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Will, will we know the final reimbursement adjustments before the referendum?
So, depending on when you go to referendum and whether or not your legislators can get you a good, you know, a good sense of that, I, I would say probably not, I would say that this is probably what you would be going to referendum with on your reimbursement rates. I have seen some towns put in the referendum that says if, for example, one town, a municipality did a senior center, and they had applied for, for bond money, state bond money, and they didn't get an answer on their bond prior to going to referendum, and in the question they identified that should, that it was up to this number, referendum, you know, that the town in Plainville could spend no more than sixty-one point nine million dollars, and if the state reimbursement, or if the state grant was awarded, it, you know, would be less, or something like that, there was some language in there, I could, I could, I could find out what the language was, but you can incorporate it in there to let taxpayers know that you are looking for a space waiver, and you hope that that net municipal cost would, would, would go down even more should you be awarded a space waiver.
Okay, if there are no others, I'm going to move it along to the next section that we have, and that's going to be upgraded cost estimate for option two, Mike.
Yeah, thank you, I think that maybe Sam could set this up for us and, and begin to kick this off for the option number two and, and the, what we call the maintenance plan.
So, so, last winter, we were asked, if we don't do this, what would be our next best option, and, you know, so that you have something to compare it to, and we, we developed something, I'm going to show you, I have three slides, but before I do that, just a couple things about what Mark said, so, one is about the confidence, so how much confidence do we have in this estimate, and there is an assumption that there'll be two years and some time that goes by between the time this was estimated and the time the bid goes in, so there's two years of escalation built in, six percent a year.
Mm-hmm.
And so, so six percent for two years is built into this number that costs could potentially go up, and there's a built-in test of that six percent, because we know how much cost went up over a year and a half, cost went up about five and a half percent over a year and a half, so six percent is, you know, if you look back and use that, it's, it's a pretty conservative number for a cost going up. Did I say that right, Mark?
You said it perfectly, thank you.
And so, switching gears real quick, you know, three slides, there, it's answering the question of what would be our next best option if we didn't do a renovate like new project, and this goes back to last winter, Mike Smith and his department went through the renovate like new process, Smith, line by line, and they picked out the lines that they said, what would be the, the immediate things, the things that just absolutely have to get done in this building if we didn't do a whole renovate like new project, and the total of all those things was thirty-four million, two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. They did that by categorizing stuff into three categories, one was, look, this stuff needs to be done as soon as possible, or, yeah, this stuff probably needs to be done, but we could delay it for a while, or, you know what, there's, there's stuff that wouldn't be done unless we did a renovate like new project, and that ended up, the stuff that was as soon as possible ended up being about fifty-seven percent of the project, the reason is, is because there's a lot of deferred maintenance in that building, there's a lot of mechanical systems that just haven't been updated for a decade plus, and that was planned, it was planned because the idea was always when we reach this point, let's not invest money in systems piecemeal, let's wait, and when we reach this point, we'll do it all at once, and so because there's all that deferred maintenance, that stuff really needs to be taken care of now, but Mike proved that, he, well, he went through line by line and, and just looked at each line, and really, this, as soon as possible, I'll show you on the next slide what that represents, I circled this thirty-five point six million dollars just so you can navigate through these three slides, this, again, is a total, as soon as possible, the stuff you would have to do on this project if you didn't do a renovate like new proj, project, and just to orient you to the whole project, sixty-one point nine million dollars is what Mark just presented for the whole project, so, just to navigate you again, here's that thirty-five million dollars that we just talked about that you would do, that's the ASAP, as soon as possible stuff within the renovate like new project, and if you look, here's, here's a breakdown of what that is, and the biggest thing up the top is building mechanicals, again, there's, there's age building mechanicals based on the engineer's evaluation that was done by- by CSG. These are things that are end of their useful life, and based on our experience, we know that they're end of our useful life because we have to maintain them on a daily basis. And the next thing is the roof. And basically, everything after this are the stuff that you would need to do to be able to access and get to the mechanicals. So they wouldn't mess with ceilings or walls unless you had to mess with those ceilings and walls to be able to get to the mechanicals behind it. A few other things, let's see. There's a little bit of, there's two hundred thousand dollars for ADA compliant bleachers that we decided that the bleachers just, you know, you have to make them safe. There is a build-in for the secure entrance, because that's been on our radar for a long time. And then door hardware, the door hardware is obsolete, it doesn't work, the safety issue that we're, you know, continually need to struggle with. The things that don't get done in this project are also listed on here a little bit. Ballfields, parking, courtyards, anything outside the building was deemed, you know, we would delay that or not do it. It wasn't put into the as soon as possible category. Signage isn't being done, acoustics isn't being done, and then, again, anything to do with painting, upgrading, making things look nice, really wasn't built into the as soon as possible. Mike gave an after that.
No, it's everything in those categories that you see there, ASAP are, they're really, like Sam said, they're interconnected. So you start with the building mechanicals, that includes the chiller, all the air handlers on the roof, controls, electrical, plumbing, a new elevator, which is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more. And then you want to do the roof at the same time, really, when you're doing the air handlers and things that go onto the roof. Windows, doors, and walls, the secure entrance obviously was built into that, door hardware, like Sam said, and walls would be basically repairing any walls that had to be demoed to access mechanicals. Building structure includes demolition necessary for mechanical access. Floors would be basically replacing floors that needed it the most right away. That wouldn't include classroom floors. Ceiling, again, that's connected with the mechanicals, if you're drilling into the ceiling, cutting through, that has to be repaired, so you have to factor in those costs. So I think that pretty much sums it up.
And then my last slide, now we have two options. We have the renovate like new option that Mark detailed, we have the option two, which is as soon as possible stuff that would be done on a maintenance, would be done on what we call a maintenance plan. So we just, we don't know what the exact schedule would be, but it would be spread out over time. And if you compare those two options, it looks a little bit like this. So option one is renovate like new project, you've already seen these costs, these are from Mark's slide that he talked about. And now let's compare that to the maintenance plan. Here's that same thirty-five point six million dollars. The challenge with that is if you do it on a maintenance basis, and you don't do it all at once, you don't get as much state reimbursement. The state really wants you to do these projects all at once. And when we went through, we realized we could get some reimbursement for the roof, we could get some reimbursement for the secure entrance, some other things. We totaled up to about three point six million dollars of things we really felt like we could, that there's a process to get reimbursement. And then we rounded that up to almost five million dollars, thinking, okay, we could be successful at getting some other reimbursement over time, but we don't feel like it would be much more than what's reflected here, because the state really doesn't work that way. They really work in, and what they've told us is, wait, defer remains, do it all in one time and do it as many as you can. So if you subtract that state funding from the thirty-five million dollar project, the local cost is estimated to be thirty point six million dollars. And so really, this slide boils down to, okay, let's compare the local cost, plane bill costs for option two that I just described to option one that Mark described, the renovate like new project, and it costs taxpayers, the local taxpayers, four point four million dollars more over time to do a maintenance project than a renovate like new project. Kathy, do you want to take questions?
I'm sure you're going to be able to help me with. So back in February of 2023, there was a discussion, of course, about this, and there is a list put together, which is entitled MSP, immediate needs facilities, and that list, which I'm trying to, you know, put together with what you, we've got here, and I'm unable to match up the items, but that particular list totaled eleven million dollars. And I'm just going to read off some of the things that are on this list, which was given to us back in February of this year. Complete HVAC upgrade, upgrade rooftop air handlers, replace class mill work and casework, create a secure entrance, replace chillers, new flooring throughout the building, new roof for middle school, AC for gymnasiums, replace elevator, address drainage issues in front of entrance. MSP, replace all student lockers, refurbish both gym floors, replace cooling tower, upgrade main gym bleachers for accessibility, replace walk-in refrigerator boxes, remove UST, I don't know what UST is. Okay? Replace all exit door hardware and window replacement. And you all of those things, but at that time in February was eleven million dollars. Now, I'm not sure what happened here, how this particular eleven million dollar option went to thirty-five million dollars.
Sure.
Can you tell me?
Sure.
Because I'm not, I can't figure it out.
That was for your meeting, I think, February twenty-third.
Yep.
And your question was, if we approved ten million dollars, what would be done for ten million dollars? It didn't look at what the building needed. It didn't look at what, you know, nobody asked, well, then what would be less to be done? Well, actually, it was asked at that meeting. During the course of that meeting, we said, okay, well, this gets us, this gets us some scope of work done, but it doesn't take care of all the needs of the building, what would that cost? So in March, well, actually, we started the next day, but we came back to you a few weeks later in March, or we came, we prepared, I don't remember if there was a formal meeting, but we published it, I think, at a board workshop, or we prepared this analysis and did this work of going through, categorizing the scope of the renovate like new project in terms of what would need to be done as soon as possible. Most of the stuff you listed is in there. Actually, I would say it's all in here.
Yep.
But then it didn't take care of everything. It only took care of what you said could be done for ten million dollars. It left aging mechanicals, it left things that would still need to be done over the next five, 10 years. And so what we did is answered, okay, if you look at the, if you look at the engineering report that evaluates the equipment as, you know, where it is in terms of useful life, if you look at our experience and what we know about the building, what would really need to be done as soon as possible? And that's what this answers. So that's, that's a, that's an incomplete analysis.
Well, that's what you gave us.
That's what you.
That's what you gave, that's what we asked for.
Right.
And I was under the assumption that the numbers came from, you know, somebody in the industry that could give you good numbers about all of these things that had to be taken care of. I don't know where the numbers came from.
Nothing.
It came from the town council. We said, well, you said.
Okay, let's stop.
If we gave you eleven million dollars, what could you do with eleven million dollars? He came back with an answer, here's what we could do for eleven million dollars. We never asked the follow-up question, what else is there that would be in as soon as possible category?
Understood. But what I said, what I'm saying is, this list of items was created by the school building folks.
It was created by.
It's not that we asked for these items, we asked if, we had an eleven million dollar referendum to do some of these facility upgrades, what would you be able to accomplish? And this is the list that was given to us for eleven million dollars. So I assumed those were good numbers. If they're not, then I was mistaken.
So just to connect the two analyses.
Yep.
Those are fine numbers. If you gave us eleven million dollars, that would be what would be done.
Correct.
And then add another twenty-three million dollars of urgent building needs related to the mechanicals that aren't included in there, that would still have to be done after that referendum.
All right.
Just to clarify, the list, the February also identify is, I think Kathy went through eighteen items, and I think at that time, we identified on the list here four that the state would reimburse. So you were, the council was interested in saying, okay, what would a ten million dollar referendum be, or bond issue for ten million, what could you get? We ended up being ten, ten point nine, almost eleven million, but you got three point six million to a total project cost estimate of fourteen millions, fourteen point six million. And at that point, my recollection was, it was just that that would be the first phase. And I don't think we answered the question as to, you know, what would happen after that?
Right.
Or what would be addressed? But that would be, I think we, you know, what would you do first, and what could you do for ten million? Okay, and then the question would have to be decided after that, after this, what I refer to as phase one. And I think that, you know, it also sets up for the next, after we get through this section, where Rob Buden will take us and walk us through a bond issuance and bond analysis, because, you know, the maintenance plan, if that's the decision, the maintenance plan has to have more conversation around how much you do and when you do it, I think.
And then just to connect the dots, that's three point six million dollars that Mike referred to. The way we prioritize, if you said, if you have ten million dollars, it ended up being eleven million dollars, but if you had ten million dollars, what would you do? We take out the things that we would be able to get state reimbursement for. And that's, so there was six, three point six million dollars state reimbursement, but that takes care of most of the things that you could get state reimbursement for. Things after that, there's not much left, that's why this is only four point nine million dollars, if you do, you know, three times that much. That connects the two analyses. Other questions?
Okay, any other questions, Frau Merger?
You know, I'm very interested in the, you know, making sure that I'm clear what is not included with this plan. And I noticed that under the third column, if the renovate like new, there are still considerable dollars in mechanicals that would not be done. Could you elaborate on that a little more, and what system those are for the two point, the two thousand, two million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand?
Yeah, that one Mike wrote.
Right on top, first item.
Yeah, there's two hundred and three line items that they went through and decided. And so if it really wasn't at the end of its useful life and didn't have to be replaced, even though it should be, if you're, and some of it too is logistics, because how do you, when you start thinking about the sequence of this and doing it piecemeal versus doing it all at once, there's some things that probably just wouldn't get to. And Mike, you can take care of the follow-up question.
Yeah, maybe just some examples of some of the mechanicals that were not included. And just to make sure I understand too, and in the technology, there'd be considerable.
But they wouldn't do a renovate like new project either.
There'd be considerable technology. I know schools typically would renovate as new, do a real technology overhaul, but that would be curtailed.
There's no technology.
Yeah, be curtailed significantly in this, and the same with other equipment, which is a lot left.
Right, the only equipment here is really the ADSA compliant bleachers.
Correct. Right, and does that equipment include a lot of things that really have relevance to the instructional program?
In equipment?
Yeah, equipment, and technology obviously does.
You might find yourself having to replace it over time regardless, you know, we just didn't categorize it as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Deb?
Yeah, you had stated when you were going down this list, that equipment includes bleachers.
Right.
Okay, do you think that bleachers is something that would go in your capital budget? Rather than in this list? I mean, you would actually get them cheaper if it was in your budget next year.
So I think that how this gets done could be combination of capital as well as projects. You know, I think, I think there's a number of things in there that you might do through your capital budget, but one way or another, it's going to be, it's going to be done through local funding.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions from this side?
I have a question. Just, so we, you know, we have like, I guess you could say, three buckets, and we're not, this is, as far as the thirty-five million figure, we're just addressing as soon as possible. We're not even talking about the could be delayed, but in theory, we would, you know, at some point, we do. So you're talking about potentially another either referendum, I imagine, down the road at some point. But you didn't do any analysis here to say, you know, in five years, those could be delayed items are going to have to be dealt with.
Yeah, we don't.
Okay.
We don't want to make it seem like we're further along than we are. We took the renovate like new cost estimate, we worked off of what we had from our professionals, because we really didn't want to make up our own numbers or speculate. And we didn't think about logistics, we didn't think about how difficult it might be to mobilize multiple times. There'd be an awful lot of things you have to think about to execute this maintenance plan, including how does it get done? Because, you know, we have a limited time staff. There would be, you know, every time we talk about it, we start thinking about things that would be having, that we would have to work through in order to execute that. So that would be, there would be a lot of planning involved with that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Rocco?
The twenty-five million dollars in mechanicals, that includes replacement of, all of them, including infrastructure associated with any of the HVAC system, chiller, all that, total replacement of everything is what I'm asking for.
Not this, there's over, there's seven and a half million dollars.
Yeah, those amounts were going to even be delayed, but I'm talking about the ASAP. The twenty-five million dollars in the ASAP, that total replacement of everything that's in that line item, you understand what I'm saying?
Well, no, so I don't know what you mean by line, because there's two hundred and three line items. It wasn't, if it was chiller, then we would have picked out that chiller, but there's there were some line items that we said, okay, here's the, here's what is related to doing that, and let's only take apart that's related to doing that. So they did, they did break it up, that's how they ended up with three different categories. And they did it in a very detailed basis, as detailed as they possibly can. The other handout that you have, the last several pages are their cost estimate, so they went through that cost estimate at that level of detail, and that's how they came up to this.
So in April of 2022, I think it was Antonotzi and Associates did a facilities assessment of the middle school, correct? In that facilities assessment, how many of these systems were rated as being in poor condition, needing immediate replacement? Quite a few had reached. Yeah, had reached useful life. I'd have, I'd have to pull the study to get a good check. So can you point me to where it says it? Because I went through this study earlier today, and I couldn't find anything that was rated in poor condition and needing immediate replacement, except for the low-slope built-up roof assemblies, which is part of the roof, that they cited that specifically should be replaced in 2022. Aside from now, all the building mechanicals and architecture structures were rated as being in fair or good condition. So I'm just a little confused as to how we could go from that being the assessment in 2022 to now we need twenty-five million dollars, as you're telling me it needs to be replaced immediately.
I'd have to pull up the report to look at myself, but I, in my recollection, there were things that had exceeded their.
They were approaching the end of their useful life, yeah, but, you know, useful life isn't really the good term to describe something that needs to be replaced, it just describes it, especially if it's not being maintained, and you should plan on replacing it, but it doesn't mean that it's not actually working or at severe risk of failure.
Respectfully, the living that building and maintaining that building and the work that they have to do on a daily basis, not daily, but, you know, there are failures that we are working with continuously. It's old equipment, you know, it's equipment that you can't expect. I don't think it would be fair to expect that equipment to last, you know, five, 10 years. At some point, you're going to have to address it. And that was taken into account, which the people who went through and did this analysis come up with this category are the ones who know the equipment better than anybody. You know, if they felt like it would last longer, then it went and did this column.
My next question is probably more for Frank from CSG here. What's the typical age of buildings and mechanicals you see on these? I know, I kind of have to figure out if you were there. Yep. What's the typical age that you see on these kinds of projects across the state, as far as the age of buildings and the mechanicals you typically work with?
In terms of useful life, or?
No, just, you know, another town contacts you, they would need to renovate their school or whatever. I think you guys are also working on, worked on Cromwell, where I think they let their school get to seventy-three years' age, which is extreme, obviously, but, you know. I want to just gauge, you know, where we stand in comparison to other towns as far as, you know, are we, why are we in this situation if it's premature? Or do most people do it at thirty years, and I'm not familiar, you know? I just want to gauge where we're at comparatively.
I guess I couldn't give you an exact example. Some school, you know, your neighbors in Farmington have a building that's a nineteen twenty-eight building that just went back out to referendum as part, that was the original school. And there was addition after addition after addition, so there's fifties, sixties.
So there's 50s, 60s, 70s, right? All of those, with the exception of the last remaining building, the last addition, the 900 wing, which was, I can't remember the exact age, 20-plus years, is, was eligible for renovated. So that piece is getting renovated as new. And the rest of the schools is new construction, so they're saving that one piece. Second referendum for the 1928 building, totally different project altogether. It's nothing to do with what the town is doing with those buildings.
You also have to look at how.
The state won't provide a renovate as new until you're past a 20-plus year mark. They won't even consider it. So when the school, but RTUs might have a 15-year lifespan, some of those things. So as schools start to go back to the state for some of these new roof, right, roof 20 years, and, you know, on EPDM is pretty good. So that's how the state gauges it. So when you go back to the state, as long as you're at an acceptable timeframe and you can show that the school warrants a renovate as new project, which is what we put together based on all of the third-party, the structural engineer came in and said, the structure's in good shape. The, you know, mechanical engineer came in and said, these things are good, but these things are coming to their end. So like, we had enough to piece together a renovate as new project that would pass through muster with the state. So to ask, what's the typical? I mean, there's so many, some towns let their schools go. I mean, Plainville's great, right? This is the last one, I think. So you guys had, you know, really worked hard to get through your school systems. But I think, what are we approaching? Is it 30 years now? Would that must be?
The point I want to make is we did let this, we purposely did let this school go. Like, to answer your question, you really have to look at deferred maintenance and think about how much money you've spent on capital, not technology. Because when you approve the Board of Ed capital, you approve technology, but then you also approve facilities. And think back since you've been on the board, on the council, and even before that, for how much money you put into the facilities and specifically how much money you put into middle school facilities. And it's been next to nothing for a decade. So a 78-year-old building's not going to have 78-year-old mechanics. They would have addressed those mechanics in some way, shape, or form. And, you know, it's anecdotal, but, you know, they have very, they have difficulty running the HVAC. They can't run it at full speed because pieces of insulation break off. And that's just one example of how they have to operate that building. They can't operate the building the way it's designed just because they're dealing with aging mechanicals. We have skilled folks who are able to work around it. But you're purposely working around it because you've deferred maintenance for so long.
So in other words, because of that deferred maintenance, we've let things go, so much so that we're at a point now where there's no longer going back and doing some maintenance to make the mechanicals function the way we want. They have to be replaced. Is that what you're saying?
That was the plan.
Well, I'm rookie compared to most people out there. You know, I wasn't around at the time that this plan was made and, you know, obviously, I can't go back in time and run for election then because I wouldn't even be old enough to run at the time I think I may have even been in Plainville schools at the time that the decision was made. But, you know, I come from a philosophy of you want to get the most life out of things as you can. And, you know, it just seems to me that the building is kind of on the younger side. Again, we've let some things go. So, I mean, I guess that, my next question would be, with the maintenance plan, what are the risks other than the financial impact associated with the maintenance plan operationally?
Again, so we struggle with how you would do that. If it's a renovate like new project, there's a lot of efficiency built in because you're doing it all at once, interconnected systems are done all at once. You have a very limited window of when you can get into that building because it's occupied by students. And so if you're doing it piecemeal, how do you work around student schedules? How do you work around the calendar? Are you going to just do it during the summer? Do you do it during the school year? All those things would have to be worked out for major equipment. And if you're doing one piece of major equipment, does it make sense to then not do these other interconnected systems and come back later? The maintenance plan really would require an awful lot of thinking to be able to make work. Plus, who does it? Because it's, you know, we're not staffed to be able to do that level of work. We learned just by doing, putting air conditioning into the middle school gym that was funded through a state grant, not local taxpayers. We learned how difficult and challenging it is to do a project like that locally without relying on external project management. You know, that took a lot of Mike's time and his staff's time, it took a lot of Andy's time. And if you multiply that by, you know, I don't know, a big multiplier, we're just not staffed to be able to do that kind of thing.
Just two more questions and I'll let somebody else speak. Do they have any records or anything that I can look at so that just so I can gauge and get a sense of exactly kind of work that's regularly going into the mechanicals under testing? And then for the could be delayed item, do you guys have a timeframe that you assign to that? Like, could be delayed for two years, three years, four years?
We didn't do that, no.
Thank you.
Sam, just a quick comment. The council has invested in the middle school. About five years ago, the boilers were in imminent danger of failing. And the council had to appropriate, I think it was like $500,000 in order to pay for those boilers because we weren't going out to referendum and we had public hearing and we had to do what we had to do because it was a moment of difficulty. So the town has invested in the middle school in substantial manner. And we have done the best we can during that time. So I just wanted to be clear that there was work that was done there.
And I didn't mean to make it sound all or none.
Okay, no, for other folks.
You were able to get state funding, you were able to get ever source funding through a program at that time and it was pretty long, really.
We got some, but.
That was really well.
We also had to appropriate from the fund balance in order to take care of the balance. So, you know, I just wanted to be clear that things have been done. Not to the level of redoing the entire school, but certainly things that needed to be done were taken care of.
That was because of failure.
Yep. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just to piggyback on that, but we also, and, you know, the council made conscious decisions not to fund certain items because we felt that 2010, 2015, that we would be coming to, you know, a renovate like new, we'll use that term right now. But, you know, we felt that a renovate like new was coming down the pike and that we would be addressing a lot of these things. So we did address issues, Chairwoman says, we did address certain things. But I know I made decisions to say, well, we're going to take that off of capital because we anticipate a renovate like new so we can address that several things all at once.
How's that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the board?
Yeah, a question. So it looks like, so a question and comment. So it looks like the difference between the projected renovate like new at 20, 26 million, sorry, renovate like new in 26 million costs at a town and 30 million for kind of the piecemeal work, which really seems like we're looking at a $4 billion difference. So to invest $4 million more, we're going to get pretty much everything that is on the list, that correct?
Other way around, it's going to cost you $4 million more to get less.
Right, okay. So then, the comment that I have here is, it's pretty irresponsible for us to defer all this maintenance. And it goes in general. The reality is, there's just staff are working in these buildings. And we've heard folks that are working in these buildings, that have to work in these conditions. And some of us have lots of kids in this district. Now, the fact that we would defer maintenance and we have all these issues in these buildings, not only is it reflecting poorly on the cost, but the fact that it shows that we don't respect and value the educators that are in these buildings and our kids that are in these buildings. We wouldn't do this to our own homes, but yet we're subjecting this to our kids. So where's the accountability in the thought process and the decision-making process from the school side? That it was in the school's best interest to provide less than adequate conditions for the teachers and for the students? And also to make that recommendation to the council, which has the power of appropriations? We can't let this happen again. We shouldn't be in this situation as a community. You know, rightfully so, you had stated that we're in good shape in this community with the other schools. Are we going to let them fall apart too and expect that we're going to spend another $35 million in a couple more years because we're not going to do the maintenance that these schools require? Because we're going to kick the can down the road? It's irresponsible. We can't do this. We wouldn't do it in our own homes, in our own homes. Why are we doing this to our children and the faculty that have to work and breathe in these situations and be in moldy rooms where walls are falling apart and you got stink and odor? Plainville's better than this. Our kids deserve better than this. The faculty deserve better than this. We failed in this situation. We have to rectify it. And this can't happen again. This is a great learning lesson for all of us.
Becca?
I just wanted to point out that, actually, Jared, I agree with you. And it's kind of a breath of fresh air to hear those sentiments. But prior to COVID, our capital budget was cut every single year. Not usually just by the council, Republican majority, but by the Board of Ed, Republican majority before it even got to the council. So during budget season, we fought for things like bricks and motor. And, you know, we've heard, you know, oh, in 2022, the renovation's going to come. So, I mean, there is accountability and meeting minutes. And I would say if you're going to get those records on what's been done to the building, I would also look at what's been cut out.
I do have one. Sam, would the maintenance plan, either in the ASAP or the delayed stuff, would that, either of those cover renovating the entrance to that building? And the maintenance plan? Mark? It would be in the ASAP to do that building, okay.
So I guess maybe, you know, you have to know where you're coming from a little bit. The statements that you made were just a little over the top, I just have to say. Because the building was not in danger, that we were not putting people in danger. I mean, that was just, we have done a fantastic job of taking care of our buildings. And the reason we have done that is because we have used renovate like new. We've used it three times, okay? And so what we're doing is we're saving the cost of having to keep, bring the building up by knowing that at some point, it makes sense to have everything done at once, okay? So that's where we were headed. That was the plan. That was the reason that we were saving actually taxpayer dollars at that point in time. Because when you get to renovate like new, and this would be our fourth time, that's, that's what makes the most sense. We did not endanger people. We, our maintenance staff is, and the conditions of our building are fantastic. So I just am, I just can't sit here and let that just lay there and, you know, not, and have somebody maybe not understand or have people misunderstand what the conditions are. And I think, you know, I'm a big proponent of building tours. And so if you want to go around and look at the buildings, the three buildings that, or the four buildings that we have that went through renovate like new, you'll see the condition of those buildings. And the intention was to have this building done in the most cost-effective and efficient way possible. And that was where we were headed. And that's why last year, was it last year when the plan changed? We were completely caught off guard. And, you know, I believe maybe it was, you know, on my part, I just assumed everybody understood. That's where we were headed, that's what we did, that's what made sense. And where that, when, or that derailed, I don't know. But, you know, I just had to say that, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair. Thank you. Yes?
Well, I just want to respond because you could be some comments that Ms. Martinez made. The maintenance that had been added into the budget and things, items over several years, maybe five years or so, that had been added into the Board of Ed budget or actually were moved prior to even getting to town council by Sam and the town manager and other people in the, in the school system that were, you know, Mr. Lepage, that were involved in the school budget. So those items for maintenance were removed. Every time I asked, well, I thought we were going to do this, but how come it's not in the school budget? The town manager at that time told me, well, we removed it. We're just going to do that when it's renovate like new. So that was not, that was not done by the town council. It was not cut out of your budget by the town council. It was cut out before we even saw the budget.
So I'm sorry, you're saying the council didn't cut any from our capital budget in years prior to COVID?
We're not allowed to tell you what to take and what to remove from your budget items?
You're not in operations, but you have to anywhere, yeah.
We can give an amount, but we can't tell you what's removed from your budget items.
For capital, we actually can't. And we've had, we do, for operational, you can't.
May I, I could just maybe recap some of what you're saying. Mr. Lepage and Mr. Lee went to the state several years ago saying, could we do this? Could we improve some of these things and get state funding for them as we go? And they were told at that time, we'd rather have you follow our process, wait until it's a renovate like new project and come to us then. And so the decision was made collaboratively to defer some of these things. It didn't risk safety, it didn't hurt students. And what happened when the renovate like new project was initially costing was you had sticker shock. We all did. We looked at it, it wasn't what we were expecting. It was at a time when costs were skyrocketing and there was a lot of uncertainty about where things were going. So there was, there was a reason for what happened in 2022. Things have now stabilized. We're in a place where I think Mark can look forward and go, 6% a year? Yeah, that sounds pretty good and that's built into the estimate. He didn't say, yeah, I'm 100% confident, but I think we're in a much better place. You know, he wouldn't have answered that question nearly as confidently a year and a half ago as he can now. And so we're in a much better place right now to say, okay, let's look at the options. Let's make a decision on how we're going to address them.
Thanks, Sam.
Madam Chair?
Yes, yes.
So many great points tonight. I would just like to respond to Jared. I had that same epiphany during several of our meetings. And when the reality hit me that potentially, we might have set ourselves up not for 100% success. And Becky, thank you for chiming in again because it was you who had shared with me that this was intended deferred maintenance, that this is something that we chose to do. We can debate all night long, who was in charge, go back 10 years and point fingers. And it doesn't change where we're at today. And it doesn't change that we need to get the school and safe. For the last year, the town council meetings, people have come and shared their experiences in these schools. And, you know, to be fair to Jared, who I know has just joined our board, welcome. You have heard those meetings and what the students, teachers that live in Plainville have come and talked about their experiences and conditions. We are talking about a massive number because we are in dire straits to repair a school. The biggest lesson I've taken away, and for anyone who's on the Department of Education after me, and I agree, whoever said it, to never let this happen again. Because a couple of things are coming into play. The school just turned 30 years old. Not every school needs to be renovated necessarily, to your point, at 30 years if we are doing proper maintenance. It shouldn't just be the 30th birthday, now we're renovating like new. I don't think that would also be the best use of our taxpayer dollars. It makes complete sense. It's difficult to say this is how we've always done it because we're not comparing apples to oranges. Linden was 75 years old when we did renovate like new, approximately. Linden was a very old school. It made sense. Wheeler was a very different situation. We could have gone in a lot of different directions. I would just like to focus on the here and now, what we're going to do to move forward to ensure that those students, teachers, staff are safe, comfortable, and everyone here in this room are confident that the school is going to be a place where kids want to be in. So there's, there's truth in all of it, no matter necessarily who's saying it. So I just want to be really clear about that because these are our kids that we're focused on. So I don't see party lines here, I see our kids. And then the other thing, I just had a quick question on, would it be possible so we can be comparing apples to apples for the maintenance? The original maintenance plan that did have, and I believe we had been referring to it as the critical item. as the critical item list. That's how it had been presented. Perhaps I'm incorrect. Maybe that's how we were referring to it. The critical repair list, the 11.9 million with the roof reimbursement and some of the secure vestibule. Would we be able to just get a list for the sake of comparing apples to apples? That same list compared to the cost of those same items today?
Sure.
Okay. Super. Thank you.
Anyone else?
All right. If there aren't any other comments, we're going to move along. We still have several items that we're going to cover before we are going to say thank you and adjourn for this evening. The next portion of our meeting is the bond impact discussion. And that will be turned over to our finance director, Rob Bieden. Rob, I know you gave us some things, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Five minute recess?
Okay. Well, Rob is getting ready. We're going to take a brief recess. We've been here for a while. So five minutes no longer free. All right, everybody. Thank you for the timely returns. We're going to resume our next portion of the meeting during this time. We're going to ask Rob Bieden, our financial director, to do a little presentation regarding the bond impact discussion, which is how is this going to financially affect the town going forward? So Rob, it's all yours.
Good evening. The light piece is the more of these. Black and white.
Hard and boring.
And no, I know what you like. But, you know, we came up with a couple of different scenarios based on these project estimated costs. And one thing I want to point out, first of all, is that, you know, the scenarios I'm going to go through are only dealing with the debt management line item in the budget. Okay? It's not dealing with anything else. Yet this line item handles a lot of other pieces of the budget. Okay? So I'm just detailing what this estimated cost could, could do for us. So to start off with, the numbers in yellow are known numbers at this point in time. Whether it's our budget for '24 or our currently known bond principal and interest payments going forward for the next five years through 2029. Okay? And we came up with some scenarios as to when we wanted to add new debt onto the books. Okay? This middle school project is not the only project that we may do over the next five years. We have other needs as well. You know, whether it's roads or our road bond expires directly June 30th and 24th. We have a public works facility potential. There's a lot of other things too. So how I started this was that at the end of June 23, which is the end of our last audit year, it's not audited yet, but our debt management fund balance is about $802,000. Okay? Just a little historical background is that the debt management fund was created probably 10 years ago. And we really have only put money into it this past year '23. We had very little balances because we used it for other things, primarily CIP. Okay? So in '23, we did put money back in, getting the balance up to $802,000. So that's our starting. Okay? In '24, we have our bond principal and interest totaling about $3.4 million. But we budgeted $3.9 million. So we budget at a higher level with the anticipation of putting money back into the debt management fund to use for future use when needed, when we bond projects or items that we need can go above our debt budget, in this case of 3.9. Now, I will remind you that this budget used to be 4.4 million. And we offered you, the town council, to take $500,000 out of this current year budget because, well, we needed the money for other issues, for other items. Okay? We would like to have that budget back up to 4.4, but currently it sits at 3.9. And we did say that during the '25 budget, we'll come back to you and potentially maybe ask for the $500,000 back. But I'll get to that in a minute. So now let's start estimating. All right? So in '25, this project timeline, we're not going to need any money for this project if this project were to be improved in the before. But we may, may need money for other items. So I just want to estimate a $10 million bucks in there. Okay? $10 million over 20 years. Typically a pair of bonds backed over 20 years. $500,000 a year in principal. Part of the estimates and assumptions in these analysis is interest rate. I'm assuming seven percent. A lot higher than we have in past years. Okay? But look at the market.
What was that percentage?
Excuse me?
Seven percent?
Seven percent, yes. That may be low. I mean, the market's up and down. But looking at other offerings that have been done by towns and communities around us and in the state, it's kind of where the average is right now. I will say that normally there's a difference between short-term rates, which is banned. We sometimes finance things by banning, which is a bond anticipation note, and then bond that somewhere down the road. The rates are very close. So there's really no reason to ban right now. Bond, pay the fees once instead of twice and bond and do, you know, permanent bonding. So the assumption is we do $10 million next year. We would add an additional $535 plus or minus to our budget. But you can see our budget in '25 is going to go down about $600,000 because the previous bond offering is coming off the books. So it's given us more capacity, more room to increase our debt. If these assumptions were to come to fruition, we bond $10 million, we would still add $685,000 back to our debt management fund balance at the end of '25 with a new $10 million bond offering on the books. So now, given the timeline of, you know, this potential middle school project in 2026, maybe we need $10 million for this project too. Okay? So our debt in 2026 does not drop off that much in 2025. But we did bond in '25, $500,000, $535,000. We're going to add another $10 million bucks. Again, seven percent interest, same 20-year period. We were to do two $10 million bond offerings at seven percent interest over the next two fiscal years. Our budget would be 3.7 million. I'm sorry, our debt payments, rather, would be 3.7 million. While our budget, assuming it remains consistent at 3.9 million, we'd still be putting $234,000 back into fund balance. So again, now over the next two years, I'm saying, let's add 20 million bucks. We're still below our budget. We're still putting money away if the money is not used for other items. That's a big key. Play it out again, second half of the project. We need another $10 million bucks. 2027. Same concept. Okay? New 25 million about, about 25-year bonds around '26 and now '27. In '27, our debt payments would be 4.1 million with an estimated budget of 3.9. We'd actually use almost $226,000 of fund balance. But that's the whole purpose of having a fund balance, to use it when you need. The purpose of this fund is to take away the fluctuations of when your bond was, your bond costs go up and down. This would be a perfect use of this money, not other items. At the, so at the end of this analysis, I only went out to '29, assuming $10 million bucks. If this money was not used for other purposes, we could theoretically have almost a $2.8 million fund balance sitting in the debt management fund. That's not to say that that money would be sitting there, not used for other purposes because it could be used. But the point is you have the room to do $30 million over 30 years. Now, let's use the real numbers that are with this project. Same beginning point, same '24 level, same $10 million from '25. And now in '26, I'm saying, well, if our project cost is going to be $26 million if this goes and all the estimates we have on the pond, as we currently know, are, you know, come to reality, we'd have to bond maybe $13 million instead of 10. Okay? Again, that's seven percent interest, principal payment, $650,000, interest 45.5. We'd be adding about $700,000 to our debt in 2026. Still below where our current budget is. Okay? Play it out the second half of this, same thing. $13 million in '27, $650,000. We'd be low in '27. We'd be spending about 4.5 in comparison to a $3.9 million budget. Now remember, this is why I said we may come back to you and say, we need to bump the budget up a little bit. But at the end of the day, without budgeting higher, with two $13 million offerings and a $10 million offering, $36 million bucks over the next five years, excuse me. At the end of the day, we still have a $1.6 million fund balance. Bottom line is that this project, at the currently estimated cost, will not impact our debt management line item whatsoever. It will or may impact other areas of the budget that this line item has been used to fund other things for in the past. But at $36 million for, you know, five years, we still have very healthy fund balance. Again, this, this scenario only looks at the debt management line item. It doesn't take into consideration CIP. So part of this project is, you know, the renovate like new, kind of showing this. If you did a maintenance type program, depending on what value you want to come up with, you still may have to bond some of it. If you don't bond it, you're going to have to put it into capital. So either way, $10 million, $13 million is going to have to go into budget somewhere. I'm saying this line item, it can absorb it. I'll take any questions if you have any at this point. Yes?
Rob, what you, you spoke about? You can't see it.
Now I can.
That's better. So you spoke about other items that, that debt management fund is used for. Can you give us an example of some other items that would be utilized through that fund other than debt management?
So like I said, this is a fund balances of June 30th. And the fiscal year '23 is really the first year we put money into the fund instead of using it for other purposes. Your other purposes are capital improvement for the most part. So our capital line items, I think we're budgeting close to $2 million in expenses, expenditures. We're using $75,000 in taxation to fund that. So the difference, $1,009.25 is coming from other sources. Part of that is coming from this difference column in this line item within the budget. Part is coming, it's coming from very, a few places, but the majority of it is coming from here.
Do we use it for anything other than supplementing our capital budget every year? Was there anything else that we would use those dollars for throughout the course of the year?
Other line item transfers.
Transfers.
Right. So when I come to you in the fourth quarter of every fiscal year, say, okay, we need to transfer here, transfer here, transfer there. If you already have the money budgeted, you'd rather transfer it from one line item to another versus having additional appropriation and lowering at that point in time your fund balance in the general. So some of this is used to do that.
Right. Okay.
If the budget is budgeted appropriately, for lack of a better word, correctly so, all of our estimates at the time we're sitting down doing the budget are actually 100% perfect for the next 18 months until that fiscal year is over, you don't have to use any of this. But again, budgets are full of estimates. We don't know 18 months from now. Seven percent. I don't know what 2028 is going to show interest rates. You know, it might be better to do a short-term note at that point, maybe a long-term bond. We've, over the last 10 years or so, with the way interest rates have been, we've refinanced every bond we've had on the books group. Lowering interest rate saving, I believe our savings is up to $3 million now over this 10 years, somewhere around there. When we bond, typically we cannot refinance those bonds for about seven years. It's a coupons for sure. So whenever we bond at a higher interest rate, again, it's going to be higher than what we currently have. If rates go down over the next several years, who knows? There will be, there may be an opportunity to refinance those bonds, but not until seven years at least. Yeah.
So Rob, what would the numbers be? And so if we borrow 20, is it 26 million we're looking at? Let's hypothetically say.
Yeah, 26 million.
26 million for a middle school project over 20 years. How much interest, what would be the total at the end of the 26 years that we're going to be financing? Come on, you can do that.
I'm going to put it in my head right now.
You can do that.
Yeah.
It's just, that's the real cost of, that's the real cost of what we're talking about.
That's, that's, that's correct. It is, it is right. So you're talking, you're talking about $45,000 a year for 20 years. I'm sorry, double that, $90,000 depending on when you start. So $90,000 for 20 years, $1.8 million in interest. Versus, I mean, we can spoil the last few years. We have some bonds up there right now at half a percent.
Yeah.
That was due to refinancing. We have a very good financial advisor, Phoenix Advisors. You know, we've, we've done a really good job of staying on top of the market when we can. This would be no different, quite honestly. Whenever we bonded, if we bonded, we would stay on top of it through administration and come to you and say, hey, maybe we have an opportunity here, just like we have in the past.
Thanks. Does anybody have any questions for Rob? The numbers?
Yeah, I just, like, so, you know, in this example where how much we actually pay over the 20 years, you use the 26 million. So if we use the 30 million on the maintenance plan, you know, is there a way? I should probably just get my calculator out. But, you know, if we're paying $500,000, you know, in principle, and $35,000 in interest.
That's not a, that's not a $10 million bond.
Correct. But, you know, we'd have to bond three years in a row in theory.
Well, I mean.
I know we have some latitude with that, but, you know, doing the quick math, the nap would be, yeah, $70,000.
The $10 million was, I just used that number because it's an easy, easy figure to calculate. So you want to do 20 million instead of 10, you could do 20 million instead of 10. It would be a million dollar principal payment and $70,000 in interest. So you'd be adding a million 70 every year, whenever you start that process.
Yeah.
Now, obviously, the more money you have in the coffers, the less time you have to go out on the market, more than likely. However, I always use a three-year window. So if we bond, I, I really like to use that money within three years due to arbitrage. And there's a lot of legal, the way interest rates are right now, arbitrage is, you know, it might be coming back. So I believe we would have to look at the three-year window. Okay? The way interest rates work, in other words, you can't earn more interest on the money than what you're paying.
Right.
So we're getting to a point now where, you know, it's, you know, we're making more money on interest than we have in the past. And we're, you know. So I really would have to look at that three years. So when I come to you and say, okay, we can do 20 million, only if our consultants say, yeah, we're going to get this done for three years. But, you know, we don't know that right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Certification, please. We have our, this is in addition to our capital budget. Now, is the capital budget that determines our ratings, how we're rated by Moody's and, and of course? So, so I'm just trying to understand, is this like an extra, the cushion? Or I'm, I'm, how is this different? I'm, because I know we have to go by ratios and, and things like that when we do our, for ratings. So how is this different than, what am I, what I'm trying to compare it to?
When we go out to market, when we go out to bond, we have to get rating.
Right.
Okay? Rating agencies look at us. They look at us in totality. So they look at what we're budgeting. Can we afford to pay back what we currently have bonded and what we want to bond in the future? They look at this consistent budgeting number as a very, very high positive. Meaning we're going to budget this number, whether our costs are this, this, or lower. We're saving for a rainy day. We're trying to get rid of that up and down when we bond. Okay? That's a huge positive in our favor. One of the reasons why we got a rating increase, what was it, Sam? 15 or 16, 16 to AA, AA2, or 17, AA2, which is the second highest rating you could possibly have. Okay? It was this concept of fixed level debt management only funding that helped us. Okay? If, you know, that number starts to go up and down, they're going to look at us and say, whoa, you know, you're going to, you're, you want to add $26 million in debt, but your debt budget's only at $3 million. Now you need four, four and a half. That's a million dollar hit to your budget. You're going to have an increase. That's not a good thing. So the rating, the ratings that our rating agencies give us for every bond offering is different than CIP. Again, CIP is part of the bigger budget scenario in the total budget picture. But this is a major, major piece that the rating agency is looking at, along with the management, the administration, consistency. the administration, consistency of management and administration, council members, the experience that everybody has. You know, have we been down this road before? Have we, have we not? There are, there are so many checks and balances they look at, it's really difficult to say what they're truly pinpoint other than this because it's been cited by them over many years. This is the best thing we can do.
Rob?
Yes?
What do we, taxpayer would like to know? What would a large project like this cost them in taxes?
It's a loaded question. And I say that because, again, just looking at the debt management line item, we continue to budget this amount, no matter what our costs are. The impact on taxpayer is zero, with regards to this line item only. Now, this difference, if it's not used for other purposes, I E. capital, line item transfers, it, it depends. I have no way of knowing it until we start going through the budget process annually, every single year.
And how often does that happen, Rob? Where the council asks you for line item projects?
I'm sorry?
How often does it happen? I know last, the last tax bill we took 500,000, I thought, Rob.
Right.
How often does that happen?
It hasn't happened since we set the line item at 4.4. This was the first year, and it was needed for other purposes. We were still able to, to come up with and create a budget that was palatable to everybody. And again, I think one of the things to take from this, even at the higher level of the $13 million scenarios, at the end of the day, this 3.9 still is a valid number because we'd still be positive in this scenario. So, the 500,000 we gave back, use, okay, you know, use it for other purposes, although I'd like to have it back. To build this cushion, the 3.9, at this point in time, is still a good number. And if we, again, you know, we're looking at this project and maybe one or two others, but certainly other things can pop up. Where all of a sudden, this 36 million might go up to 40, 45 million. Then, all of a sudden, this 3.9 may not be sufficient.
If I'm wrong, there's other projects coming off of this in the near future?
There will be, and you can see from, let's see, yeah. So, we're dropping in 25. So, you're looking at 3.3 in '24 to 2.7 in '25. But then it stays consistent, 26, 27. Again, just the yellow lines, not the new projects, just the yellow lines. So, we're at 2.7 in '25, 2.6 in '26, 2.5 in '27. Then, we have a drop to 1.9 in '28. Okay, so, we're looking again, again, another five years down the road before we get a big drop. 25 is going to be a big drop, and then another three years after that.
Any, any other questions for Rob regarding the financials? Fascinating stuff, I'm sure you all love what that does, but...
You told him it was a board of...
It is important, it is very important. It is what drives the set policy. If there's no other questions, Rob, thank you so much for that.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the board? No?
All right. We've pretty much gone through all of our, all of our agenda items. We have a couple of items left for comments. I will be for the council chair and the board chair, if makes any comment. I would ask Michael if there's anything else that you would like to add, and anything else we should hear from, from Neil.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, you should all have the printout that kind of guides the conversation around option one, if that would be the choice at whatever point in the future. Discussing with our consultant, Mark, and CSG about the state's process follows a certain path they think we're all familiar with. That is an application deadline for submission by June 30th. So, on the second page, you'll see that in bold in, in yellow, and essentially, we're just working back from that number to, or that, I should say, that date and working backward to say, "Okay, you know, how much time do you need?" This is just sort of a guideline for you, just a takeaway to, to keep in mind. But, I think the state, we're told, looks at the fact that if you were to try and target a referendum for May ahead of the June application, you'd have a, a, a strong application if your, your referendum passes. And obviously, if it, it doesn't, then there's no point in submitting an application. So, this is just merely a, a guideline for the group to look at. Should option two be selected, there are some dates and sort of sequencing that you need to do in order to get a referendum ready for the voters. So, I don't, I'm certainly happy to take any questions on that, but it's pretty straightforward statutorily and per charter.
Thank you for putting that together for us. Last, next section, comments from Town Council Chair. First, I would like to thank everybody that prepared the materials for tonight. I know it's, we keep talking about this topic, but it's important, and it's important to get the most current information we could possibly get. So, I thank you, Sam, Mark, is, is Mark here?
Empty chair.
Empty chair, okay. Well, I would thank him as well, and, and everybody else that was here tonight to put together the materials for us. Rob, thank you very much again for the financials. They're, they're most important, and, and as I said, this is what's going to drive this whole project, whatever direction we go, and that's, that's something that we need to keep our, on our mind. Other than that, I'd like to thank the Board of Education for coming tonight and continuing this conversation. Certainly, there's a lot to think about. There's a lot of information that was presented tonight, and we're going to continue having discussions before we make, before any decision certainly can be made. Thank you to my fellow council persons for being here tonight as well. This is a lot of work, and we've talked about it at great depth, and we're going to continue to talk about this in the, in the near future. So, I want to thank you again for your thoughtful questions and your attendance here tonight. As a wrap-up, there's more to do here, and there's more to explore. There are questions that came out tonight that are going to be answered in the future, and I look forward to having future conversations with my fellow council people, as well as the Board of Education, superintendent, town manager, anybody that's involved in this process. We certainly will continue this, and this is a lot of information we're all going to digest and take a very close look at. So, thank you again, everybody, and thank you to those who came tonight because this is information that, if you hear it firsthand, sometimes it's better than getting it through another source. So, I appreciate everybody that came out to listen tonight. Thank you again. Laurie?
Thank you. I would also like to thank everyone for being here this evening from both the town and the Board of Education. I believe that we must move forward with the urgency on renovate like new project. It was a unanimous intent of the board in the spring of 2022, and like many of you, I do believe the needs are now greater for the fall of 2023. We have received good news over the past few months. The demographic study showed that our buildings are right-sized and rightly configured. Now, the updated cost estimates have remained as stable as we could have hoped for. So, now, it's time to do our due diligence to our families and staff who currently teach and learn at MSP now and for decades to come. Thank you.
Thanks, Laurie. Right now, I'll put it up to the Town Council and the Board of Education. If you have any final thoughts that you'd like to offer, this would be the time, Rosemary?
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Really, I also would like to thank the staff for all the work you've put into this for really what is now a period of years, and I truly appreciate it. I do think that both the information on the project itself and Rob's presentation on the financials have once again presented, you know, a compelling case for renovate like new. I know there are some, some specific questions. I'm sure they'll be answered. But just financially, educationally, practically, the case is compelling. I mean, and financially, the, the fact that it's actually going to cost less in terms of the town expenses is certainly a very convincing argument. You know, it was, you know, our full expectation that we're going to act on this back on June of 2022. It did not happen. Unfortunately, we have lost two years, but that's behind us, and I sincerely hope that we can move forward with a renovate like new project. Also, very interested in the comments that Mr. Bruce has made, not only in the specifics of the importance of the middle school, but also some of the things he said that really reference the broader picture in terms of what do we really want Plankville to be? What do, how do we want Plankville to be perceived? How do we make this an attractive place for people to move with families and to stay here because they're very satisfied with the direction in which the town is moving? So, I think it's a very specific issue, and I think it's also a broader issue in terms of what we would like to see for the town of Plankville. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to make a comment?
Anyone from the board?
Madam Chair.
Oh, we're still...
Oh, sorry.
Yes. You know, it sounds like we're going to, at some point, follow up again with this group. You know, I would propose that we pick a date. I don't know if you have anything in mind, but, you know, I, you know, I could meet next week again. I don't, you know, obviously, there's a lot of people to consider here, but, you know, I think with what we've heard here tonight and some of the comments that, is this something you were planning? Or maybe you have a plan already of when you think we should meet again? But, that would be my point tonight is just, you know, what is pinned down to date, we can get back together.
Anybody else wish to speak? Council?
Rebecca? Oh, council, my name right now.
Let's just get these folks, if they're all set, does anybody else...
I think it's a lot of information that we need to review and, and really do our due diligence reviewing everything that we've gotten tonight and late last night as well, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any final thoughts from this side of the room? All right.
Rachel? I mean, Rebecca?
So, the Capitol Building and the Projects Committee, the Board of Ed, Steve LaPage, two of the council members, Rosemary and Christopher, numerous parents and community members have written in, spoke, said they believe that renovate like new is the best way to go, is the fiscally responsible way to go. Over 700 people signed in petitions. All of those people understood from the beginning that applying for renovate like new and getting to over 65% makes the most sense. I get to speak with one person outside of this room who said they thought that the community shouldn't be allowed to vote on the renovate like new project. I have not found one person. The only group that doesn't seem to either understand or, and/or agree with this is the Republican majority on the Town Council. The MSP renovation has been on the Town Council agenda seven times in the last 22 months since you guys have been sworn in, and we're not any closer to a plan or a renovation. Instead, we've wasted our time looking at budgets made by the council majority, like what can you do for 10 million instead of what the professionals came up with. We've studied ridiculous ideas, like Councilman Rocco's idea to close the middle school and move the kids to Linden. And tonight, yet again, there's no surprises in anything that came to us. Most of us knew that prices were going to go up in time and not down. You know, I, I feel like Dave has been reasonable. I've heard him say in public session that, you know, he thought people should be able to vote on renovate like new, but Kathy, Deb, Joey, and Jacob, your lack of leadership and inability to make common sense decisions has now, it will now be costing the taxpayers at least an additional $1.8 million. And that's if we do renovate like new. And if we do the maintenance, then you've cost taxpayers over $4 million more. Not to mention the expenses that have already came up and will continue to come up while you're dragging your feet on this project. Most recently, the over $30,000 of the mold issue with the middle school. You've made it clear that you're not willing to listen to anyone, whether it's Capitol Buildings projects, the Board of Ed, superintendent, council members, and at this point, my question is, what will it take for you to be confident to allow the superintendent to apply for the renovate like new grant, which costs less and fixes everything? How much more time and money are you willing to waste? And to just really think about some of the questions that were asked that we're having staff go and gather the information, get back to you, do they even make a difference in your decision? Does it make a difference who's looked at what at the, at the Capitol Buildings and who's fixed what over the last years into what you're going to do moving forward? We need to do something to move this project forward. It's our kids. That's it.
Yes, go ahead.
Madam Chair?
Jared is, have the floor right now, you'll be next.
So, I think we have an obligation to not just rubber stamp. It's our obligation to do due diligence to ensure that we're making the best decisions for the families of, of the district as well as the totality of the entire town. It is never in, in anyone's best interest to rush judgment, especially when it comes to probably the largest expense the town has ever faced. When we're coming up with this project, yes, deliberation does take time, but it always is wise and prudent to make sure that we're making the best prudent decision. And those things shouldn't be rushed and can't be rushed, especially when it's probably the largest expense that this town or one of the largest expense the town has ever experienced. It's full.
The question really is that we are not, this is not rushing. This has now taken over two years to make this decision, and this is at the expense of our students, our teachers, our administrators, and the staff at the middle school. And by our delaying, we have really, as, as one other person pointed out tonight, cost the taxpayers several million dollars. And we have had really now two years to deliberate this, so we're not rushing to decision. I agree with you, we must carefully consider all of our options, and that, I think, we are attempting to do. But now, it comes a time for decisions to be made prudently. And because we are impacting the students at the middle school, the 500 students there, the teachers there, the administrators there, and all the other staff that is in that, in that structure. The more we delay now, the more the issues that are of concern are getting exacerbated and are really generating at, at an unacceptable rate. So, I, I agree with your belief that we must deliberate this intelligently. I believe that we have, we have presented the facts and figures. Now is the time that we have to get together and have to work together to make a decision that will benefit not only the students and administrators and staff, but also the taxpayers of this town.
Jacob, you're next.
You know, I, I just want to point out that we are in this predicament where we are told we have to do a renovate like new because the school's in dire condition and absolutely needs it. And, and, you know, as we deliberate on this, I'd say that there's fair ground for that, but I just feel like I need to point out there's nothing irresponsible with taking time to do the due diligence and the research that we've been doing, even though it has been taking some time. Because from my perspective, I have, I'm a junior member up here. I think everybody up here has been involved in this, maybe except for Jared, much longer than I am. I was not privy to any renovate like new plan. I think it was conceived about a, close to a decade ago now. So, when we were faced with the decision to do the renovate as new, and I was going through the agenda, as I always do the, the day before, or sometimes the day of our meeting, and saw the amount that was being asked to be borrowed, it was my first time seeing it, so I was hit with some shell, a shell shock, and that led to this long journey of doing the research of why are we in the position we're in now? We really don't have any alternatives to this because at the end of the day, the useful life of a building is not 30 years. It's, for most companies or government entities, it's 40 to 60 years. So, to say that a building needs to be renovated new at 30 years is just shocking, but I get it, it's because under a, what I believe was a Democratic majority a decade ago, the decision was made to defer maintenance for the renovate as new, which quite frankly, I think was an irresponsible decision at the time. But, it's done, it's over with. But that is why we are in this predicament, and that's why we've done the work we've done to try to consider some alternatives. And there will be further discussion on it, and we will put a plan in place, hopefully, soon. Because I, like everybody here, would like to see the middle school issues addressed.
Thank you, and Mr. Wasakka.
Just a couple of things. Just a couple of things. Because I was part of the leadership when the decision was made to defer some maintenance on the middle school, knowing, this whole process goes back to, excuse me, 2005, where we appointed a steering committee, and we said, all of our schools over the next 20 years are going to need to be renovated or going to need to be addressed. And we appointed this steering committee and said, give us a plan how we would do that. And they did that. And obviously, they said Linden should be the first one, that's the oldest. And they said, you know, then you can move on to Topolone because you'll have some soon space at Linden, which will save some money, not only save money, but save time on the renovation of Topolone. You know, and as we've gone through, and middle school was the last school that needed to be addressed, because at the time, it was actually the newest school we had. I think we're talking about renovate like new, and I feel like we're getting stuck, because right now, I have in front of me, I have one option that will give me 60% of what's needed at a building, and you're asking me to pay $4 million more than an option that will 100% renovate the building for $4 million less. And I, and that's fine if you think a building should last 40 to 60 years, but the point is, renovate like new is going to cost the least amount of money to the taxpayers. And that's why 10 years ago, we said, you know, honestly, the middle school, I think, was slated for 2015, but if you go back far enough, we anticipated we'd go to renovate like new in 2015. So we're actually eight years past that. But the bottom line is, this renovate like new is the least costly option for the town. There's a reason the state wants you to renovate like new, because then the building's taken care of for a period of, you know, at least 25 years. And I think as we've gone through this process, we have seen that whether it's piecemeal, whether we just address certain systems, it just costs more money. And I don't know why we're sitting here debating, you know, let's do 60% of a project and pay more money for it. It just, we had a plan, and, you know, to some of the comments made tonight, and we spent a lot of time on a plan, and we had a Capitol Projects Building Committee that spent a lot of time on a plan, and things were moving in a certain direction, and then it was time to come to the council. And on June 20th of 2022, the council at the time made the decision not to go forward with allowing the superintendent to apply for a grant. And that is certainly within the purview of the council to do. However, as we've seen, because I'll be honest, I wish we renovated, I wish we renovated it back in 2015, because I'll tell you what, it would have cost a lot less than $24 million to the taxpayers of the town. We would have looked like geniuses. And, you know, I think as an elected body, rarely do people consider you a genius. So now we're looking at, so here we are now, seven, eight years later, the project now, the cost is up to 61, 62 million, the cost of the town's up to 26, 27 million. We're here because of some bad decisions, regardless of what side you're on, what you think. You know, I feel that I made some bad decisions, maybe I didn't say what I needed to, especially back in June of 2022. Quite honestly, I probably didn't say what I needed to say back in 2015, when this project probably now looks like that's when we should have renovated. So I just want people to understand that we've put a lot of time and effort into this, and a lot of different organizations have put a lot of time and effort into this. But I think as we keep getting more information, the same, renovate like new is the least expensive option for the taxpayers of the town. I think it's time that we take a step forward. Now, if some of you don't believe on the council, if you don't believe that, you know, the middle school doesn't need to be renovated, that's fine, that certainly you're entitled to that. But I think we've got to do some things, like we, you know, we keep saying, you know, I just asked the question about can we set up something, when can we meet again? And we haven't even answered that question. You know, we kind of just, that question, I don't know, we just went on to somebody else. So, you know, I just feel like this is not, there's no end game here. I feel like, you know, we're just going to keep looking at stuff. And, you know, what are we doing? We're talking about, you know, it's staring us, it's staring us in the face what we should So again, I would just like to ask, I think it's important we get back together, but I think before we leave here tonight, we need to pick a day that we can get together. And if you think that's something that should be after the election, that's certainly, you can do that, but I think you need to say something. You need to acknowledge my question and say, we really think we should wait until after the election, if that's what you think. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Rosemary.
And also, I would just ask that everybody, both on the board and the council, keep in mind, this is really a two-tiered decision. This is a decision about whether we think that the proposal to renovate like new is a legitimate proposal, and we have to make our decision on that. And then there's a decision about, at what point, after really years now, are we going to send it to the voters and let them make the decision? You know, it seems to me, in my opinion, we have enough information and detail. Like I said, there's a couple of questions out there to get answered, but I think that we have the information and detail to feel that it would be a very legitimate thing to send this to the voters. And remember, they have the final word. It's not the Board of Ed, it's not the town council, it's the voters. And, you know, and how much longer, how many more years can we go on with this before we say, okay, it's your decision to the townspeople?
Any other thoughts from the council?
Hi.
No, we're good.
Go ahead, Cassandra.
So as far as the steps going forward, it would be lovely if we can just agree bipartisanly to tone it down a bit. We're all here for the kids, we're all here to make steps forward. I believe what we were given from Mike was a schedule of proposed dates of what could go next. So it's not that there, I'm just saying, these are, there is, there was proposed and given to us a plan as far as a proposed date of January 16th, 2023, and then it goes on to the next slide.
And that should be 2024, by the way, although.
Yes, thank you. Yes. Point of clarification.
Yeah, it's a clarification, that's fine.
2024. So it starts, these dates are on here, there are dates. So I don't want the public to think that we were going to leave at any point this meeting tonight without a plan in place, because there was given a suggested plan in place, which we would all have emails, we all have ways of communicating from Mike's office, from our board chairs, from the town council chairman, to get us the information as to when we're going to meet next. So that's one thing. We do have a plan in place to meet, we don't have a date set right now. And to say that all of us right now can get out our cell phones and figure out a date, I think it's a little exorbitant to, you know, to try to do. So I think that, I believe that it would be, who of us, especially wanting everybody to actually be there, that, you know, agreement's made, there are some dates that we allow our chairpersons and town councilmen to let each of us know what is the time and place for us to meet next. I mean.
I'll propose, why don't we check our October 20th to October 30th schedules and see if, as a framework?
Well, that would be something that they would get back to you on.
Right, well, look at some dates.
I mean, we can agree to look at our calendars between October 20th and October 30th, right?
There are elected officials that are in charge, so I think it's best to let them do it. No, I'm saying, councilwoman and the Board of Ed chair, those are the ones that are in charge right now. Let them.
Well, I'm asking, can we look at our calendars?
And I'm saying right now, no, I'm not taking, I'm not taking out a poll to get a date.
Well, I'm just asking, I'm just asking for some consensus that we can, can we look at a range even, just?
Mr. Wazarko, do you need a date tonight? Do you need a date tonight for us?
I need something. I need to acknowledge my question, that's all I need.
Okay, well, I'm going to tell you, I'll say this, I will say this, Mr. Wazarko, tomorrow, we're going to send out a request to all the council people, suggested dates, and we'll see when everybody's available. I am not going to commit to a date tonight, I don't have like.
Then you don't have to, but I'm saying, like, you know, this is.
We will send it out to the Board of Ed as well. We will definitely do that.
And my point is more like, is this three months down the road, or are we looking like to meet next month?
Mr. Wazarko, I said we're going to do this, okay? We are going to get a date to reconvene. We'll do it, and we'll send it out, and we'll invite the Board of Education and anybody else that should be there, and we'll take care of it, okay?
I'm sorry, that was.
It'll happen.
Is it tomorrow?
I beg your pardon?
Tomorrow?
No, I didn't say it was tomorrow, Rebecca. I said I will convene with the council that's here, we'll look at our calendars, we're going to ask you and your colleagues to look at your calendars, and we will come up with a date that's going to work for everybody, as well as the town staff that has to be there to help us. So we will do it. There are no other questions.
I have one very quick question, everyone wants to go back. No, someone will have a quick answer. What year did the middle school turn 30?
Last year.
2022.
Yeah, last year.
So I guess I'm, I just wanted to, because I too, I thought maybe you were a fortune teller, had time travel skills to get it done in 2015. I just want to make sure I hadn't missed something, because I thought I had just turned 30 years. So I just wanted to clarify that we could not have done this in 2015, correct?
No, we couldn't.
We could have, it has to be 20 years.
Yeah.
That's to be 20 years.
That's been at least 20 years.
That's to be at least 20 years. So the 30 years is something different?
We do that, we do that.
That's just, that's just the timeframe people.
So 20 years is eligibility, 30 years was the steering committee's intentions?
No, 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 no.
Okay, I'm just, I'm genuinely trying to understand, because the 30 years was the number that has always been shared.
The steering committee, we just asked them to look at the five schools and give a timeline as to how you would renovate each school and what order it should go in.
Got it.
30 years, that, I, there was, the steering committee never used 30 years. I think it's just because the school's now 31 years, that's where that 30 years came from, but.
Understood, thank you for that clarification.
And in the meanwhile, the Board of Ed and the town council decided to renovate like new Wheeler School. So that's what happened. Wheeler School jumped ahead of the middle school, because Wheeler School was built in like 1951 or 52.
That's not true.
So the timeline changed for the middle school because of Wheeler School.
Yeah.
Middle school was never moved from Wheeler.
Yeah. Wheeler. And that's what caused MSP to get pushed back.
I want to find a comment. I just wanted to thank again everyone for coming, and thank you, Mr. Case, thank you, Mr. Reese for attending, thank you, Sam, thank you, Dave, thank you, Rob, thank you, Andy. And we know how much time and dedication this is, and I just, I think one thing we all can agree on, I'd love to leave on a, we can all agree on note, is that we need to move forward. And I want to just, I appreciate all of you guys trying to get, and Mr. Case, one of the things that was very important to you was getting this meeting on the schedule as quickly as possible from the last one. So just to be fair, I know everyone has been trying to get these on the schedule as quickly as possible. You asked a question about should we wait till after the election? I think we all seem to be capable of having these conversations in spite of politics because of the importance of the situation. That's not my choice to make, I'll support whatever you all decide. And I just want to thank the council also. I understand that your purview is bigger than ours, and I'm glad that after COVID, that you did take your time and do your due diligence. And I thank the Board of Education for all of the hard work that we've done, because this isn't, this hasn't been easy. And for those of you who've sat here for a long, long time that know what happened 10 years ago, it's helpful to get that information, but it still doesn't necessarily mean because it was decided 10 years ago, that it's the correct plan today. So I'm glad that we're able to focus on the future, and that's just all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. At this point, I will close the meeting and ask for most to adjourn, please.
Pushing.
Second?
Sachin.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you again very much, everybody, for all of your.